Thank you very much. Good morning. New month, March the first, and also marks the first time since 2019. City of Richmond is resuming the meeting of committee of the whole. To begin with, it is bright morning. Actually, every council member is here for this committee, so good to see committee members. And the first thing to do is call to order. Is there any council announcements? Okay, I would just make a very quick comment. It's that it's certainly my honor to chair the first committee hall again in 2023 because it so happened. The last time City of Richmond had a committee hall, I was also chairing that in December 2019. So it's a coincidental, but it's also an honor. So moving on, is there any introduction of emergency or time-sensitive matters? And yes, we have council new joining us online as well. No? Then moving on, could I get a member to move for adoption of agenda we have in front of us? Mayor West? We only need one member to move the motion. All those in favor? Carry unanimously. Thank you. And moving on, is there any disclosure of particular interests of general nature thereof? Seeing none? If there's any items need to be identified to be pulled for separate discussion? Now, of course, we have two delegations. So item 11.1, item 11.2 will be have separate discussions. But any other agenda item members of the committee want to pull for separate discussion? Now's the time. Seeing none? Then I need to have a motion for the adoption of, well, basically all agenda items. Can I have a mover? Yes, Councilor Sivilis, thank you. All those in favor? Again, I'm happy to say carry unanimously. So moving on, we don't have public hearing today. Nor we have any presentations, although I have to say thank you for all senior staff who are here. Let's move on to delegation. And we do have Mr. Reza Barari, 91 Church itself regarding draft town park master plan, item 11.1. And I do see on the screen Mr. Reza Barari, and the floor is yours. And the time is five minutes. At the end of fourth minute, you might hear a bell, which meaning you have 59 more seconds to go. So the floor is yours. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. I'll start with the positives in option one as recommended in the master plan. I'm very pleased to see a specific recommendation I made during the 2019 committee meeting to evaluate master plan options. Specifically, the development of the playground in a wooded area. I think children from ages of four to 12 will enjoy that very much. And it's an excellent source use of that corner of that property. The conversion of the pickleball to a natural skating rink is also a healthy way for children and adults to be proactive in the winter months. So thank you for that. I'm going to move to areas where I think require some improvements. Replacing the playground by the Algen Barrow Arena on Church Street with more parking space robs of many children that live in that area from a fun and safe playground. Playground, excuse me. From an aesthetics perspective, more parking spaces not give the impression that Church Street is also a residential street. In fact, it includes more pavement to a street that is already plagued with water flow and flooding issues, just as the city engineers. And do we really need more parking space when considering the parking space on Lorne Avenue? And 250 parking spaces in the main parking lot? I don't think so. Second suggestion. Replacing the tennis court. Excuse me. Replacing the tennis court with pickleball seems counterintuitive. Why not incorporate pickleball in one of the designated picnic pavilions? The master plan states that the growing popularity of pickleball, particularly amongst seniors, led the community to express a clear preference for replacing tennis courts with pickleball courts. I'm sorry, but this does not promote or encourage younger generations to engage in physical activities in this area. How can we possibly call this a town park that would be the main source for the community's sporting events if it caters to a specific age group? I don't play tennis. But judging from the many players I've seen enjoying the tennis courts in this area, I can tell you with certainty that they would feel differently than the participants in the 2019 meeting. You should be balanced by including tennis and pickleball courts. There certainly is a space for it. Why are there two picnic pavilions anyway? As much as baseball encapsulates a special historical design features of this area, there's also a case for basketball. But where are the courts? Option two in the master plan, also known as the active park, includes the basketball courts and the playgrounds I have mentioned. But there is a clear initiative to ignore the needs of the age groups that can take advantage of these amenities. Are the basketball courts only for the Wilcox, Oakridge, Mill Pond areas of Richmond Hill? If so, please explain why. Lastly, I remember one of the assistants to the designing team in the 2019 meeting stated the cars were zipping through Pugsley Avenue, and there should be consideration for speed control tools. Well, you must know that speeding vehicles and high traffic are very relevant issues to Church Street residents as well. The master plan suggests implementation of a formal pedestrian crossing from town park to unity park across Pugsley Avenue. And landscape curb bump outs should be added to calm traffic and continue to look and feel of enhanced pedestrian connection into Unity Park. Please, please consider the same for Church Street connection to the park. Church Street is already a corridor for young street drivers. Please help us curb the traffic and speeders that will certainly increase with the revitalization of this area. Thank you very much for your time. I think I have one minute left.
Thank you very much for the delegation. It's within the timeframe that we certainly will be talking about 11.1. And thank you for your input. Much appreciated. Now, moving on, we have another delegate on a different matter, 11.2, agenda item, Mr. John Lee from Brookside Row, and it looks like he's already here. Mr. Lee, welcome. Good morning. And it's five minutes for the delegation. And again, at the fourth minute, then you will hear a bell, which meaning you have another minute. So, Mr. Lee, welcome. You are talking about item 11.2.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Chair and the council. On behalf of Young Burnet Residence Association, we oppose this application. Please display slide two. Next slide, please. This site is located in a challenged position, trapped on three sides by north, south, and west. The only access point is from Young Street. Please see point A on the map. Due to the BRT median street on Young Street, you cannot directly across road and to left. Therefore, no matter which direction you are going, you must first merge to Young Street Southbound. Next slide, please. The problem that for those residents who want to drive north or east, see the red car on point A. They must first merge to lane one, then transport to lane two, and finally turn into lane three. These transitions must be completed in a 70-meter-long road section, which is busy during rush hours. Therefore, there is not enough space and time for the driver to complete the three transactions in such a short distance. Because a side has only one exist, cars waiting for a chance to turn left at point A will block all cars behind it from leaving the side. Next slide, please. If the numbers of cars on side is small, it will not be a problem. But we are talking about over 600 cars on side. Will the side road service may only accommodate up to 20 cars? Therefore, during rush hours, most of the residential cars on side will be trapped in the underground parking lot. This site is not as suitable for hyperdense environment due to its physical restriction. Next slide, please. Please be aware that a part of land is classified as natural core and is an essential component of the regional greenland system. This system is destined to safeguard critical natural resources and habitats, and is vital to prevent any attempt to rezone this land from profit-driven purpose. Thank you. Next slide, please. Do we really need this development? The current site includes over 6,000 square meters of commercial space that provide more than 100 jobs for community service and local economy. However, it will be closed and replaced by more residential units, which will further add pressure to insufficient local service facility and job requirement. The regional investigation plan mandates that at least 15% of the misused land in the Young Corridor must be designated for commercial use. However, this application only include 1.45%, which not even one-tenth of the minimum requirements. Additionally, the policy mandates that 25% of the units minimum must be affordable, but this application doesn't include any affordable unit. Richmond Hill faced a job shortage of 30,000 five years ago. And with the potential addition of over 20,000 residential units in the Young 407 TOC, we need to conserve an additional job shortage of 10,000. The lack of employment opportunity and economic development has a significant impact on our city's growth, which I will address another time. Lastly, provincial, regional, and municipal policies never endorse development plans that solely focus on residential density without taking into account the actual needs of the committee as well as the impact on the natural environment. Therefore, Young Burnet Residence Association urged the council to reject this application for the interest of our committee and the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee, and thank you for finishing on time as well as presenting with all those slide deck. And I for one, and I'm sure committee members here, you're loud and clear. Thank you very much. Now, committee members, we finish with all the two delegations. I'd like to move on then to the committee and staff report. On the agenda, the first one is about draft town park master plan. So now I bring the matter to the committee. This is actually in Ward Two. So, Councilor Thompson, would you like to lead off for the discussions? Councilor Thompson?
Thank you very much. Through you, the Chair. Yes, I would like to provide a few comments. I would also like to move at the end that we'll receive the report and refer all comments back to staff. Similar to Reza who spoke earlier, the delegate, there are a lot of good things to like about this plan. And I would like to highlight a few of those things. And that is that having a walkable trail network that accommodates people with accessibility needs, the addition of a pollinator meadow along with naturalized areas, the addition of many more trees, the addition of the northeast lawn and picnic pavilion. I particularly like the bump out and crosswalk on Pugsley Avenue over to Unity Park. I believe that will also serve a purpose as a calming, traffic calming initiative. And yes, I do like the idea of the current courts becoming an ice pad in the winter. But that's just me. I like to skate, so I don't know. However, there are a few things that I would like to mention. And one thing that I would like to say is about the drop-off loop. I'm not so sure that it's really going to add what we really want to achieve here. The entrance is actually on the south side of the building. So to have a loop on the west side of the building, you're not in front of those doors. And I really believe that people are going to continue to drop their kids off on the south side, and that the loop isn't going to serve a lot of purpose. The other thing about the loop is that we are in a residential area. And what you'll find is that you're going to have the headlights of cars that are going to be hitting the home to the north. And also, when they go to leave the parking lot, now you're actually shining your headlights directly into an apartment building on Church Street. Whereas right now, you know, your entrance and exit, your headlights are just going to be shining along Lorne Avenue or down Verndine's Way. So it's something to think about. I'm not sure that we'll really get the advantage that we think we will get out of having a loop. And I think the kids' park that is there now, I think that that space could be better utilized in that regard. Another issue that I see is that this loop is not, in my opinion, is not particularly bus-friendly. So if you're expecting that buses that will be dropping off kids at tournaments and things like that, I think that they'll have some difficulty actually using that loop and coming back out onto Church Street. And speaking of buses, I noticed on the design that we're actually losing all the bus parking that currently sits on the south side of Verndine's Way, parallel to the main parking lot. And that's about six or seven spots for buses. And I'm looking at the parking and how it's being altered. It looks like it'll be pretty difficult for buses to actually maneuver in and out of there, even if they were trying to find someplace to park. So it seems to me that buses will have to go someplace else to park altogether. They wouldn't be here at all. I would have to say then, in a different setting, I would probably love, love, love a playground in the wooded area. But I do see a safety concern with service vehicles having to do a turnaround where children are playing. Plus, I agree with comments made by another residents that you have Zamboni coming out there. And the fact that this park is now at the complete opposite end of the main entrance, I'm not sure that if people have more, if they have siblings of other kids that are actually playing in the facility, would they be able to take them around the back to that? It seems to be quite out of the way. And I do have more comments, and if we're going to go to a second round, I'd like to take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, and also you already moved the motion to refer all comments back to staff. Thank you for that.
That is correct, thank you.
Thank you. We have Regional Councilor Dipala.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I just have a question regarding, I really, really like this plan. I really think it's going to be great. It's overdue for improvement in that area. And so many of the suggestions are good, and there's a lot of work done and a lot of effort put into this. I think it's going to be great, but was there any consideration given to closing off Lorne between Young and Church to vehicles and just making that pedestrian only? Or any of those streets possibly to pedestrian only?
Thank you for your question, Regional Councilor, directed to commit. Oh, yes, Commissioner Kwong, please.
Through Mr. Chair, thank you for the question. I'll redirect to Manager Dobby on that matter.
So through you, Mr. Chair. We did have some consideration of thinking about the idea of closing down Lorne Avenue. That issue is being dealt with through the transportation master plan, which is a separate study that the city has underway.
Thank you, Mr. Dobby. Yes, Regional Councilor?
Okay, that's great. I thought this might be the time to address it. I'm sure it's being considered in conjunction with the study area includes Lorne Avenue, but through that transportation study will keep tabs on what's being proposed. I think it'd be a great opportunity. I think we really need to make it a more pedestrian-friendly area and connect Young Street to this park. And ultimately, I don't think we can do it today, but maybe a bridge to the ghost station at some point from this park to get pedestrians from the ghost station. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I support the motion for this back.
Thank you very much, Regional Councilor Dipala. Next speaker is Mayor West. Mayor West, please.
Thank you very much. So yeah, thank you for the speaker that came to speak. And thank you in particular for Councilor Thompson's comments. I know he's given that this is in his ward. He's been working with a number of residents about this, so thank you. So I guess, having said that, I would certainly take a lot of the comments that he has to heart. And I know that staff will do that. I do tend to agree. I'm not quite entirely positive. I understand the rationale for the loop at the front of the building. And I think the resident made that clear. Although, having said that, I also respect that, I'm sure that this has been considered carefully by the staff. But I would probably leave my comment that I'd like the staff to take a look at that and see if, you know, if it's not needed, then let's not do it. And I do agree, I mean, I've been to that facility many, many times. And I would never drop somebody off in that location, given that the doors, actually, not just the doors to the arena, but even the doors to the Ed's Room at the back are nowhere close to that. So it's not a particularly good drop-off location. As for the location of the children's playground, I love it. And I, you know, with all due respect to Councilor Thompson's comments, and I think they're valid about some of the concerns about it. I mean, I'm sure we can find a way to mitigate some of those concerns and still have the, or hopefully have the wooded area as a playground. I think that's a real unique opportunity within our playground offerings in Richmond Hill. And I think I would like to find a way to make that work. Although the comments that were made about some of the concerns, I think, are valid. We need to look into that. I totally love the idea to have an ice pad there. I think that's really important. And I mean, not that this year was a very good year for skating. I mean, it really, really was not. I mean, we didn't even have the Mill Pond open this year. But hopefully, in other years, we will have at least a few weeks every year where we could have a pad like that available. And I think that would be really great to have that opportunity. I like, you know, just on a general term, I really like the character. And I think as Councilor Thompson said and as the delegate said, there's a lot to like about the redevelopment of this. I think it maintains the character of this park, but it adds to the positive parts of the character in a really good way. It sure will be nice to get rid of that parking lot at the corner of Center and Pugsley and do something useful with it. Because right now, it's not pretty and it's not useful. So it'd be really nice to have that programmed in the way that's being presented here. I totally love the pollinator meadow. I think that's really nice. And it also provides a bit of a buffer to the residential area. It's interesting, you know, that the lawn bowling club is not part of the study area, which I totally understand and respect. But I'm very cognizant of the fact that the lawn bowling club is also an important component of this park in the overall sense and really adds a great deal to the character of this park. So I'll leave it at that. As I said, I really think this is good. I think, you know, perhaps there's some little, you know, second thoughts that need to be given to a few of the different pieces here. But overall, I think we're heading in the right direction on this. And, you know, I look forward to seeing that park brought back up to the glory that it was once. I'm a little bit too young, maybe, to remember the Spring Fair being there. But actually, it's probably because I didn't live in Richmond Hill at that time. But my wife, who did live here from the beginning, remembers that. And, you know, having that park brought up to that level of importance in the community again, you know, it really would be a great thing for our city. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor West, for your comments. And next one on my speakers list is, what one, Councilor Davidson. Councilor Davidson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome.
Excuse me. Thank you, staff, for the staff report and the maps and the pictures. It always makes it really easy to understand the concepts. I do, I have heard from residents that don't all live in Ward One, who enjoy tennis. And they aren't as vocal as the pickleball group. I would like, I would like staff to consider, I don't know how to put it. I mean, we already have 16 pickleball going in at the David Dunlop Observatory lands. I would like us to consider improving some tennis courts, or is there a way that they are interchangeable? Is it either, I don't play either, but is it either tennis or pickleballers? There a way to draw lines that make these pads available to both groups? Because there are people who enjoy tennis, and there's a picture here from 1903. Tennis has a history in Richmond Hill. There's a group that would like a, not being a player, but my understanding is they want one pad in all of Richmond Hill that is painted in a way and marked in a way that is professional. And they would like to start a Richmond Hill tennis club. And residents have reached out to me from all wards saying that they would like to start a tennis club. They will run it. And I think that's a real opportunity for the community to come together of all ages. And since we're seeing a lot of development along Young Street and in this core area, I think we need to have our parks appeal to all age groups. And I think tennis is part of that. So I don't know how you make a pickleball a tennis court or a tennis ball a pickle court, but I would like to see that. Or I would like to see consideration to making a, I think they said painted green. If any tennis lovers out there know what that means, would like to see a more professional court that's something a club could rally behind. The other thing is I love outdoor rinks too. I don't know how much of the pickleball/rink cost goes towards the rink. But the Rideau Canal didn't even open this year, and climate change is mentioned in this plan. And I really hope we, I hope it's not a huge expense to have that ability. Because I don't know, unfortunately, how often we're going to have days where we can have outdoor skating rinks. And perhaps that money is better spent on something else. I just put it out there. I love outdoor rinks. And I would love to have one in my own backyard. But what is the reality of climate change to sink money into an outdoor rink? No. But I do like the pollinator idea. I love the wooded playground. And I love the concepts presented by staff. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much for the comment. And also, you raised some points for consideration by the staff as we move forward. Thank you, Councilor Davidson. Next on my speakers list is Councilor Sivilis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to the resident who spoke and to our staff for this remarkable draft plan. Incredible amount of work has gone into it. And I commend them. Just a few comments that I have, some of it really being stated. I'm very pleased to see the permeable paving and the low-impact stormwater features. I think that's superb. We need to see them in more parks, especially large parks. I do, I have the same concern about the turning circle. I think that that needs to be revisited. Definitely has, there's merit in questioning its residency. With all respect to Councilor Thompson, I agree with Mayor West. I think that the playground in the middle of that forest is a wonderful idea. Absolutely wonderful idea. But I do understand the concerns that the local councillor has about access and where people come in and leave. So I'm sure that there's a workaround around that. But I think this playground in the forest is such a great idea. Then with regards to Councilor Davidson's comments about the pickleball courts there, I don't disagree with her. I I think that we need to be we need to be very careful in in how we approach all of this, while pickleball is tremendously popular, and especially with our seniors. There are sixteen new courts going into the DDO. Some courts, I believe, other tennis courts are getting double lined, pickleball lined as well. So, as Counselor Davidson said, we need to ensure we're serving all all residents with all their outdoor activities. I think a good idea, in my opinion, would be to have these double up. These are tennis courts as well as pickleball courts, so people can choose what they what they want to play. And I think that will, that is, that's a good sign towards our tennis playing residents. And I do like the idea of the outdoor rink, although I agree, there's, we're going to have difficulty with that as we move through climate changes. And and my my last comment is, given that this park sits next to the Elgin Barrow Arena. And Elgin Barrow was late Mayor Dave Barrow's father. I believe that it would be very fitting to consider renaming this park, the Dave Barrow Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and in particular, last question. As a civilist. And then next on my speakers list is Counselor Chu. Counselor Chu, please.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Chair. Through you, Ms. Chair, to our city staff for consideration of that pickleball court. I know in Ward Ward Two, actually, we do have two tennis court, one is the Horse Ranch, and another one is beside of Richmond High School. And so, we do have limited tennis court in our community, both including Ward Four. Ward Four only have two. As according to our Counselor Davidson's comments, in my areas from both Ward Two and Ward 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 Four, we do have a lot demanding for tennis usage. So, when I play tennis, we always compete with our pickleball players as well. So, considering the high demanding for both Ward Two and Ward Four, is any possible our staff consider using the multi-function features to enable this pickleball court for both tennis players, also the pickleball pickleball players as well. My second comment here regarding to the basketball. In this area, I see there's a lot of space for basketball. We really don't need a lot of space here. I will consider, please, our staff consider if there's any way you can put either one or two basketball just for fun, right? We have the middle age or young kids, they like the basketball as well. So, find a location, small, small piece of site, right? Set up the basketball there, so they can enjoy as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Counselor Chu. I see any other community members who want to speak on this? Seeing none, that's including you, Counselor, you joining us virtually. If not, maybe as Chair, I'm the last one to share my comments. First of all, like Mayor West would say, that this park, town park, certainly is a very proud history. It's an actual part of the evolution of from village to town, now a city. And it's mentioned about two hundred century of last century, the Spring Fair. And also, in particular, I'm very impressed is the softball team that based on there was one time world champion. So, that's really remarkable, remarkable history background. And that leads to my first comment is that I like the part that in the future, when we look forward with the proud history, if a bright future is to include those interpretation signs. You know, the spots where the, well, the soft ball field may be obvious, but you know, where are all the major kind of areas for gathering for the cultural societies, Spring Fair, and all these other things. And and it leads to my second point is that the interpretation signs would also be, as a reporter is saying, to promote is an intergenerational park. Imagine a school teacher or a grandpa, grandmom walking in the park with his or her grandchildren or teacher taking the students. I think it's lots to be tell through this park about the history of Richmond Hill. So, on that front, my first comment is I like that walk in particular, where the areas may not be as, in the meantime, as accessible. So, to make it really truly connected and 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 improve the connection. And his comments already make in terms of can we look at not that just one court as a pickleball, but potentially with the different kind of line painting, it could be conveniently, perhaps, to change it to playing tennis. Or even, I have heard from the community, what about outdoor badminton courts? Basically, structure wise, although I'm not a seasoned player in that, is basically a rectangular shape, or something the staff may think about and look at. And one aspect, and I think colleagues have mentioned it. On one hand, I can see the unique experience if I were a kid again to play in the north woodland area with all those kind of games, wings, whatever you can do. On the other hand, I'm mindful, I'm sure staff will turn their mind to it, that from a security standpoint, if I'm a granddad, grandmom, or parents, there were some measures to help me to feel more comfortable mitigating the potential, potential, I'm only saying that, because only good things happen in Richmond Hill. But about the security concern, particularly with young kids in a more shielded area away from the open sites. But other than that, I I also like the talk about connection we have said earlier, then there will be a crosswalk. We can be, maybe, I was just thinking about, although I see the kind of traditional marking, but perhaps we can be creative, the marking, linking the Newtown Park to the Unity Park. Well, we don't have to invite, you know, the four member band to walk across it to make it well famous. But but perhaps we can make that crosswalk linking the two town park to Unity Park in a somewhat creative way from a painting perspective. Of course, the traffic concerns going into other areas, like Church Street, as the delegate was talking about, I'm sure staff look at that. After all, it's a good report moving forward. I look forward that we're moving on. You know, in particular, this year is hundred fifty anniversary. So, proud of our past history and looking forward with a bright future. Thank you very much for having the fifty five pages, fifty five pages report. That is very comprehensive, in depth. Thank you. I should finish my comments. I see a second round. Mayor West.
Thank you. Just a question based on some of the comments we were hearing. Can you, maybe this is a something to manage your Dobby, but the the pros and cons of having a joint pickleball and tennis court arrangement there. I assume one of the advantages of having, I'm not sure it's an advantage, but just the facts of having pickleball there is that we have, there's actually more courts than because the pickleball courts are smaller. Is that correct?
Manager Dobby, or is it Commissioner Huang?
Well, it's up to whoever wants to.
Yes, Manager Dobby.
I can, I can, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, I can try to answer that question if you'd like me to. So, right now, there are three tennis courts at at Town Park. If they were to be converted fully into pickleball courts, that amount of space would allow for four pickleball courts. Right now, we do have two of the courts dual lined to allow for tennis and pickleball. And certainly, we can look into the idea of having the courts just all fully lined based on the comments that we're hearing so far.
Okay. What has there been? I mean, I've been around for long enough with the tennis strategy and and, you know, the emergence of pickleball and so on, to realize that there's always a bit of a tension between those two uses. What is the, have you heard of any situations where you've got multi-lined courts that it creates conflict between the two groups? Because the amount of time for play is different. So, the expectation of when the the courts turn over is different than if it was strictly tennis or if it was strictly pickleball?
Manager Dobby?
I have heard that there has been some conflict at Town Park specifically. Mainly because there there's just the two courts that are relined right now. And one of the the courts gets covered with some of the debris from the trees that are above it right now. But this is certainly something that as we move forward with the notion of dual lined courts, we'll have to keep an eye on. As part of the parks plan, we have the monitoring study that we will be doing. So, I think because this is a bit of a new format for the city to be using, it's just something we'll have to keep our eye on.
Okay, well, I just, I I want, you know, I I am aware of, it's not quite as simple as, you know, doing one or the other or doing both. There's pros and cons in in all of those scenarios. So, I would ask staff to take a close and careful look at that before we make any final decision on what they're going to be. I I don't have a preference between one or the other or both. But I want whatever we do to to serve our residents the best, because, I mean, a facility like this has to be as inclusive as possible. And and I I hear the comments. I mean, if you don't play pickleball, but you do play tennis, then obviously, you're going to want tennis courts. If you don't play tennis, but you do play pickleball, then you're obviously going to want pickleball. And having both sounds like a good compromise, and maybe it is the best compromise. But I want to make sure that whatever we do, we're doing, you know, overall, throughout the whole city as a strategy, you know, to serve our residents the very best. And I doubt that there is an actual correct answer in that regard. But, you know, as politicians, we're always trying to find the best answer out of, and where, you know, where an answer isn't maybe possible to have the best answer. But we try to come up with the very best that we possibly can under the the circumstances. So, I'd ask staff to take a look at that carefully and see if there's, you know, whatever is the the very best recommendation based on all of the different factors that we we have to consider. So, anyway, so thank you for the second opportunity, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mayor West. And that's, I'm sure, Commissioner Huang and Manager Dobby are both taking notes, bringing up a good point. We just have the diversity, inclusion, and equity special meeting yesterday. Yes. Inclusion is very important. And also, if I can just paraphrase the late Mayor Barrow's words, it's all about community. So, to the extent that we could have multi-use for the facility, if at all possible, that would be a good thing. So, seeing no other members want to have a second round, I'd like to call the vote for motion. Oh, oh, sorry, Counselor Thompson, you do want to come back a second time, yes, I remember, sorry. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you very much. Through you, the Chair, I definitely appreciate all the comments that I've heard today from my colleagues. I definitely appreciate the plan that was put together by by our staff. I do want to get back to a couple of things that have been mentioned and just speak a little bit more about them. And again, you know, the wooded area for this playground, yes, in a different setting, I would love, love, love to see that there. My concerns are that this is also a service area where vehicles are going to be coming up. As a matter of fact, you'll also see that vehicles will have to turn around right at that playground. They'll be backing up to turn around right by the playground. So, I do have those safety concerns. So, I hope that staff will take a look at that. The comments about pickleball, I I agree with Counselor Davidson on a number of fronts there. And you know, when you look at what's happening with DDO, David Dunlop Observatory Lands, yes, those pickleball courts are are much further away from the residential homes. And anybody that's actually played or seen pickleball, they know that it's actually a fairly noisy sport. It's 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 quite different from tennis, where, you know, you're going quiet, please, you know. It's, you have a hard plastic ball against a hard racket. And it's a constant thwack, thwack, thwack that's going on. And it's usually followed by some, you know, childlike exuberance after, you know, the the point is is won. So, it is a very noisy sport. And where these particular courts on the the Town Park Plan, you have residential homes right behind, you know, these these courts. So, I'm, I'm not so sure taking away the tennis is is a good idea. I would certainly prefer to see the three tennis courts remain. However, I think to mitigate some of the problems that Manager Dobby had had mentioned is to actually line all three tennis courts instead of two, because that seems to be what's causing some of the problems right now, is that, yes, the the first court is actually a tennis court, and it it's the gets covered in debris. It's not lined. And so, you have pine needles and cones and things like that that fall on that first court. So, quite often, if a tennis player gets there first, they'll go to one of the other courts, which do have lineage for pickleball. And this is where pickleball players may come and say, well, can you move over to the tennis court, you know? And they're saying, well, no, I got here first. And you know, it just creates problems. So, let's try and avoid that if if at all. And like I say, lining all three and keeping them tennis, I think, would be an ideal scenario. There was a a comment made about basketball. I believe that the moment we we do have basketball courts in the Unity Park, so just the other side of Pugsley, there's basketball there. And I think there was a comment about the crosswalk. And if I'm not mistaken, I'm I'm looking at in the design here, a nice crosswalk that's going from Verndine's Way over to Unity Park with some nice little bump outs. I think that's perfect. This is great, you know? And I think, like I said before, that'll also, you know, provide a calming device or for transportation going along Pugsley as well. Have a couple of questions, though, for for staff. And that is, I I love that we're getting a whole bunch of more trees. And probably, these questions would only be answered in the design phase. But do we know if we'll be losing trees and how many?
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. Commissioner Huang?
To you, Mr. Chair. Certainly, we aim to protect as many trees as possible and replace them as we have the opportunity. And those, Counselor Thompson's quite correct, a lot of that would be looked at in the more detailed design phases as we move along. But certainly, a natural environment and tree population is very, tree canopy is very important to the city.
Thank you for your answer, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you for that. Also, looking at the the plan there, I'm I'm just wondering about the garbage bins and I I don't know, is a service for picking up the garbage, is that happening in off-peak hours now? And if it isn't, then I may have some concerns as to where those bins might be located. Can anybody speak to that?
Commissioner Huang, can you answer that? Thank you, Counselor Thompson, for a question.
Through you, Mr. Chair, certainly, the location of the bins is a part of the design exercise. Unfortunately, I can't speak to the schedule of pickup at this point in time. I don't know if Manager Dobby has that information, or perhaps Acting Commissioner Hearn has some.
Additional comments? Yes. Yes, Director, turn on the microphone.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yes, sorry. The I guess the the question is, I don't know when scheduling of garbage pickup is occurring now, if it's if it's during peak hours or off-peak hours. And, you know, we don't actually understand where the bins will be just yet, because that'll be the design stage. So, it may not be a concern if pickup is off-peak hour. So, I was just wondering if So it may not be a concern if pickup is off-peak hours. So I was just wondering if if we knew what that was.
Director.
Yes, um, I'd have to get back and look into that for you.
Thank you for your answer, Director. Yes, Councilor Thompson.
Um, thank you. And this, uh, there was one other comment that uh I've heard from residents and that's about cycling. There doesn't seem to be but, you know, with the pathways, is that also included in the cycling? We didn't uh pick up on that if it was.
Commissioner Kwang, can you join to respond to that?
Direct to Manager Dobby.
Director, yeah.
Uh, so through you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry, Manager Doby.
Sorry. Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, because the larger transportation master plan project is going on at this, uh, sort of the same time as this project, um, the key cycling route is identified on Center Street, which is to the north of Town Park. Um, so that's why there wasn't specific uh design intention uh around having, for example, the new uh throughway be designed for cycling as well. Um, because the larger T M P project is directing the cyclists along Center Street.
Thank you for the answer, Manager Doby. Councilor Thompson, back to you.
Um, thank you. I believe I'm maybe out of uh time, but just uh quickly, because um there was mention about Badminton in the uh the northeast lawn area, which I I think is a great comment to pick to take back to staff. So I'm very happy to move the motion to receive the report and have all comments referred back to ca- back to staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I do see, uh, we have a third speaker and a second round, uh, Councilor Davidson.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm wondering if we can consider if we do make pickleball and tennis courts interchangeable. And again, I don't know the technical aspects of that, that we make them alternating days or staff set up the courts on days. And I think people who are into those different sports will know which days we can play tennis on Thursday, Friday and Sundays, and we play pickleball there on the alternating days. Um, and if this ends up being something that works, we consider expanding it to pickleball slash tennis courts, including DDO to include tennis courts there amongst the sixteen pickleball courts. Um, and then with respect, I I want to say to my colleague, Counselor um Counselor Thompson, that I I am prone to childlike exuberance. And I think as long as it's within the hours of noise limitations, I I I'm excited that these things get people excited and they get out. And I really think it's our job to make them as appealing and accessible to as many residents as possible. So that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your suggestion, uh, Councilor Davidson. And I see also, Counselor New, I noted that the yellow card, uh, so the floor is yours. Actually, New.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for the report. Uh, just out of curiosity, um, how do we turn a pickleball slash tennis court into a skating rink? You know, from my recollection, I think this is the first time that we 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 do this. I just, I just, I just wanted to know how it, how how this work through you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Uh, Commissioner Kwang, can you help? Um, are we going to make history in Richmond Hill?
Through Mr. Chair, I'll redirect Manager Dobby again.
Manager Doby.
Bobby, uh, so through you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, Counselor Liu, it it would be a similar type of design that we're doing on um the splash pad feature at at Baby Hill, which you're familiar with. There's, there will effectively just have to be a bit of a lip um in the design uh to allow the water to be there at at certain times of the year. Um, that's how we expect right now. Again, we're not at detailed design, but um that seems to be the way that some other places have done it, uh, where they have certain types of courts, which are converted to uh natural rink at at certain times of the year.
Well, thank you for the answer. You know, I I'm I'm happy to learn more about that because uh this is pretty interesting to me. And 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 we need also space for people to change uh into skates and 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 all those, and then I would like to see how that works. And in terms of uh pickleball courts and and tennis courts, um, my personal opinion is I I don't like mixing the two of them. So if it's gonna be tennis court, let it be tennis court. If you want pickleball courts, let it be pickleball courts. That's just my my own opinion as a tennis player. Um, and uh, and other than that, I don't have any uh comments. I look forward to the uh to the to 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 the next report. And uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, Counselor New. Uh, next on my second round speaker list, Counselor Michael Shu, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, as as we are talking about the pickleball court, I have a similar concern about this. Um, given that there may be sixteen additional pickleball courts in DDO Park, uh, should we still build four more courts in the coming Town Park, which is re- relatively close by because they are not too far away from DDO Park?
So question um raised, uh, Commissioner Kwang, can you help?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, I think it's a very good debate right now and certainly staff certainly appreciates the challenges between tennis and the can, I guess, the emergence of pickleball. So we do what we can to multipurpose courts to the extent possible. And in some cases, we have dedicated courts such as the new ones going in for the DDO. Um, certainly, the availability of land is also a question and where to put them throughout the community. So uh we will do our best to try to marry the two programs and um provide the support the community needs to the extent possible.
Thank you for the answer. Um, Counselor Shu?
Can we could, can we concede that uh uh we are going for another, any other choices like an indoor, indoor multipurpose arena or something like that to replace the outdoor pickleball court? Because uh noise is one of the concerns and I think it's for all season, maybe better.
Okay, um, thank you for your question. I see that City Manager perhaps has a response to this.
Uh, through you, uh, Mr. Chair. In terms of indoor facilities, that's where the recreation plan comes into play that council just approved. So our future facility development is certainly depicted in there. Um, just in answer to the pickleball tennis uh debate, uh, just as a for your information for council, uh, when we did the community consultation on Town Park, it was uh pre-COVID and uh pre a num- pre-parks plan and a number of other things, when we didn't have any pickleball courts outdoor other than the two that are at King's College Park. Uh, since that time, since we undertook the consultation and we had a number of people come out and advocate for outdoor pickleball, we have actually um embarked upon the ten uh pop-up outdoor courts at Richmond Green. Uh, we have also uh implemented uh some dual lining at some of our community parks. We have that survey underway now, and our parks plan has certainly recommended a tennis slash pickleball strategy that we need to undertake to have this very conversation. So those things didn't exist prior to uh the initial consultation on it. So staff certainly recognize uh the issues and the differences between pickleball and tennis and the popularity of both sports and making sure that we're accommodating both sports in our community as effectively as we can. So staff certainly will take those comments back. But in terms of indoor, we offer a number of indoor uh playing opportunities already. I would say in the majority of our community um recreation facilities. And certainly, the lining of pickleball and true pickleball courts would be a consideration in the new North Westlake Community Center as well.
Thank you for your answer, City Manager. Now back to you, Counselor Chief, Counselor Shu.
It's all about.
Thank you very much. Um, seeing no other committee members, second round, Counselor Thompson, I'm going to call the vote on your motion. All those in favor, including Counselor New, uh, that's carried unanimously, Mr. Kirk. So moving on, uh, we are going to agenda item eleven point two, uh, where we also have a delegate on this matter. Um, this site is actually in Ward Four, so um, Counselor Tree, uh, now is uh your turn. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. As through you, Mr. Chair, uh, I read this through the the our reports. Actually, uh, I just want to summarize a little bit regarding the reports from our staff, also from the uh feedback from uh residents as well. As a while of delegates, uh, John Lee, Mr. John Lee, I already mentioned his concerns. I want to just address a little bit from our report. So there are few items I want to echo here as well. First one is building heights and densities, right? And based on the reports, um, the FSI, as you know, was only designed for two point zero. And also the height is around eight floors for that building area. And now it's become three buildings around twenty, I forgot, twenty-seven, twenty-five, two of them, another one is eight or eight or nine. So, um, uh, echo that. So building heights and density is really a concern and really beyond our uh expectation. The second part will be affordable housing. As you look at the report, our um staff clearly stated twenty some twenty percent, remember, twenty-five percent um is required for affordable, but from the design applicants' perspective, we did not see that findings. So we need to find out how going to be a support and requirement of twenty-five percent affordable housing here. The third one, the environmental features and protections. As uh you see, they are allowed to the gra- uh green grass here. The new proposal list here did not consider that very well. So and uh the minimal vegetarian protection zoning buffers required proportional to significant woodland, permanent and intermittent streams. And the valley land is thirty meters unless a reduction can be adjusted through a natural heritage evaluation program by the city of Toronto Region Conservative Authority as well. So uh the third one regarding to the protection of humanity. So I think this new uh new proposal uh did not consider that very well. The last one would be parking. And John Lee already mentioned the parking is your channel. You can see from the map perspective, right? We only have one entry here, consider six hundred, seven hundred parking cars there. It's gonna be jam up not only Young Street, also the uh uh Western Brook area as well. So it's a challenge for us. And uh, uh, I'm make a summary here, to base on our staff's report. So staff recommends that Ontario Land Tribunal either way, that council does not support the applicant's official plan and zoning ballot amendment application. The appropriate staff and any necessary external consent be direct to appear at O L T to support council's opposition position on this matter. So from my personal perspective, I I oppose this solution. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Chief, for uh, you know, comments as well as moving for the motion. A second person on my list, because list is Counselor Davidson, Counselor Davidson, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and through you, I uh, I I do want to confirm this area is outside the Bernard KDA, is my understanding. And I I am in support of going to uh to staff, going to um say no to this development. I think for us to have official plans and and for the region, and we say, well, these areas are the areas that are going to be really high density. And we know that the Bernard KDA is very high density. I I don't know that it serves residents for us to just say, oh, well, this is a, this is high density and it's not in the Bernard KDA. But, you know, let's just let it happen anyway. I do think if we have plans and we say these are the areas for high density, we lose some credibility with residents if we don't try to keep things to the plan. And this is not within the Bernard KDA. It's huge densities. I agree about keeping the treat areas. So I am in support of of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davidson. And I have next on the speaker list, Counselor Siviris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Mr. Lee for his delegation. Um, I I, my only comment is that I fully support the staff recommendations in front of us and the local council's concerns. Um, I'd also like to draw attention to recommendation C, which says that city staff and the applicant continue discussions towards a resolution, the outstanding appeals and the submission of a revised development proposal that is supportable and represents good planning. So um I I highly recommend that um the developer uh acknowledges um point number C and continues um appropriate discussions with our staff so that we can find some kind of middle ground here that is suitable for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Counselor Siviris. And next is Counselor Michael Shu, please.
Thanks, Chair. Um, as we can see, uh, as we consider the construction of uh three new buildings on Young Street, I think it's important that we take into account the potential impacts on our community. Uh, firstly, uh, increased traffic congestion is one of the concern. And also, the uh, the construction of this building could change the character of the community. Uh, altering the skyline and potentially leading to a downgrade of residents' quality of life in a more dense environment. And uh, we we have to make sure that we have enough facilities to accommodate the increased population size. Um, we have to consider very seriously and carefully when uh any high-risk building on Young Street. So I would like to ask if any studies or reports have been conducted to assess the potential impacts on existing infrastructure and resident quality of life. And also what's, what step can is, can be taken to um mitigate the negative effects?
So the question, I think it should be directed to Commissioner Kwang. Commissioner Kwang?
Um, thank you for the question, and Counselor. Through you, Mr. Chair, certainly the city's official plan provides development framework for all new development, uh, specifically along the Young Street corridor. Uh, through those policies, of course, we take very seriously the compatibility of that intensified development along the corridor as a bu- a buts existing neighborhoods, and that's certainly a major challenge for the city. Also, within the city's official plan and hopefully through the official plan update, there'll be a number of design parameters which define the scope and the scale and the types of uses that we want to have in the various locations and consistent with the vision of having intensified development, not only in the regional center, the major nodes uh as identified in the, through the Young Bernard Secondary Plan and other plans to follow. But certainly, um, there will be intensified development along the corridor as dictated not only by the province, but in order to maximize the utilization of the pro- public transit infrastructure along Young Street and Highway Seven.
Thank you for your answer, Commissioner. Um, Counselor Shu? Okay, thank you for your comment and question. Next, I have Mayor Wes.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I I will say that at the beginning, right from the beginning, when that we've started talking about this application quite some time ago, it was, it's an outlier. And I didn't support it then, and I certainly wouldn't support it now. The revision really hasn't changed what we're talking about very much from the the first time that we've seen this. Um, I think, you know, there's been some specific um reasons why, like, you know, that this is not um appropriate, but I think the biggest thing to make a general statement is that it's just way out of precedent uh for that particular area. Um, and you know, the 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 thing that makes it it more con- um concerning for me is that a lot of the development that is in this area or is about, you know, is on the, in the pipeline for uh for approval has actually complied with what we're expecting, generally speaking, in that area. This is just an outlier and um, you know, and the fact that it's a larger piece of property, um, you know, means that there's more opportunity for the the applicant to do something creative without making the buildings as high and as dense. Um, so I I I have very serious concerns about that. And I think, you know, on page fifteen of the staff report, there's uh five bullets that I think outline the concerns that staff have and and the delegate had and the and the person that wrote the letter had as well. And we're all pretty much, I think, in agreement that for one specific reason or another, the uh, this is just not an appropriate uh land use for this particular area. Uh, I actually, an interesting comment came up about the commercial component of this. Um, and I'm sorry if I've missed this, but how much of the of this application as it stands right now uh will be commercial? Like, it it should be mixed use. Uh, I don't recall reading a significant amount of commercial uh in this particular plan.
Commissioner Kwang?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, there is a very small commercial component uh as outlined in bullet three on page five. It's in the neighborhood of six hundred and, sorry, eight thousand, eighty-nine hundred square meters.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think that's important because, again, you know, being a larger piece of land. Okay, well, I mean, I think that's important because, again, you know, being a larger piece of land, I think there is an opportunity there for us to do something viable with regard to mixed use. You know, I guess I look at this, I don't really cherish the thought of sending something, sending our staff off to fight something at the O L T, that's not an ideal situation, but I think in this particular case, we're so far out of the realm of what I think is appropriate there, that this is, this is an appropriate action to take. You know, with all of the pressures that we're getting with Bill 23 and other pieces of legislation and, you know, and the general move to create more housing, and I get all that, but I think in this case, this is still, you know, as I said earlier, an outlier in the sense that it's just far bigger than that, than what we're proposing to build in that area, and as I said earlier, even the things that are already built in that area are way less tall and big as this is, including lands between that building and the K D A, so this would create a very odd visual situation where you have all this kind of moderate development in that area in the core, and then some really high buildings, so I don't think it's appropriate, I support the, you know, the motion that's on the floor at the moment, and you know, hopefully staff can get some sort of an agreement that is more appropriate for that area than what's being proposed now.
Thank you, Mayor Wes. Next on the speaker list is Regional Counselor DePaula.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and yes, I agree with the mayor and the local councillor here and our staff, that this is this is the time where we, we need to fight at the O M B on this application so we can delineate the areas in which we, we choose to have density or where density is appropriate. Going north of the Bernard K D A, I think it's important that we, that our, that our staff make the case that our, you know, our official plan not have this type of density, that there's a more moderate density on on that, you know, that stretch of Young Street. I support the recommendations and, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't take away from our pursuit for more homes and affordable homes, but they need to be in our K D As or transportation corridors, areas like the Garmley go station, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Regional Counselor DePaula. We're still in the first round, is there any other member hasn't spoken yet want to comment? If not, I would also share my comment in the first round. And number one, I'm firmly, firmly in support of the motion in front of us opposing a scale which has been mentioned a number of times about this particular application at this location. I find it really telling when the Toronto and Region Conservation Authority is a party to this, and because in the staff report, 18 pages long, it outlined a number of concerns. My colleagues already mentioned a number of them, but in particular, pay attention to the potential impact. Unfortunately, it's adverse impact on environmental aspects in terms of the, whether you're relating to a buffer, whether relating to encroachment. So to me, this is a potential disturbing ecological aspect of the natural heritage environment. In addition, was it mentioned about the the, the character of the community is make reference, if you look around, I think they both delegate, mention it, and I appreciate also the written comment on this. If you look across Young Street, then, you know, there's nothing at this height, even 29, although it seems to come down from previous proposal. So, one aspect is the, coming back to the scale which including height and density, insofar as the, my other particular comment, which I've been talking about, mixed use, thank you, Mayor, for clarifying that, and also comment being made about the apparent lack of response or information, what percentage for affordable housing as we would like to see, and all in all, I have to say that it also, I don't seem to see through the report from staff, the applicant in this case has been as responsive, I would like to see to our staff comments in terms of what are the plans to address this, what are the solution potentially to mitigate the others, so I'm hopeful. I'm sure the applicant and the agents are watching, hearing the delegate today, as well as the written correspondence submission and all our committee members' comments, and I honestly hope, as Counselor Siviris mentioned, part of the motion is that, yes, we are going to Ontario Land Tribunal to oppose this, your excessive scale of proposed development in this corner or this area as well. Please, in everybody's interest, take advantage of C, which meaning in this motion, to come back, continue, if it hasn't been done before, is that the dialogue, discussions with our local councillor, our staff, and anyone that may be helping help. So, all in all, I'm in full support of this motion in front of us. Unless someone wants to speak on the second round, if not, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of the motion in front of us, move by Ward 4, Counselor Tree. Raise your hands, please. I'm glad to say that, Mr. Kirk, please record it as unanimously, and I hope applicant takes note. Thank you, thank you, my colleagues and committee. Now, moving on, and I is my understanding, Mr. Kirk, unless you correct me, the other items already been adopted as consent when we pass the remainder items of agenda, which get to the next thing is any other business. And I see none, there was no emergency time sensor matters being raised, and as I understand it, there's no closed session. Now, it would be good to have someone move for adjournment, we only need one mover. Counselor Davison is a mover for adjourning the very first community overhaul of this term, so, all those in favor. No wonder carried unanimously. Thank you very much, my colleagues, thank you very much, staff, and thank you for members of the public for watching, and thank you for all the delegates and people who have taken an interest in these matters. Thank you. Have a still good morning.